Good evening. Welcome to our summer town meeting. My name is Bill Litchfield. I have the pleasure and privilege of serving as the town moderator. And on behalf of the Summer Residence Advisory Committee, I'd like to welcome you to the 76th Annual Summer Town Meeting. As you perhaps know, Chatham is unique in having as a part of town government, an official body of non-resident taxpayers who were your hosts this evening, the Summer Residence Advisory Committee. And I will introduce them shortly, but because this is a meeting of an official board, we generally are required to adhere to law. And I will then read to you something that relates to something called COVID. You may have heard of it. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 23, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20 until March 31, 2023. This meeting of the Summer Residence Advisory Committee is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the number 1-508-945-4410 and entering the conference ID 736484591 pound, or join the online meeting via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. A recording of this meeting will be posted on the website as soon as possible. That is official but necessary. This committee, which is also official, was established by a vote of the annual town meeting in 1997. And we're fortunate to have an active and concerned group of committee members who I will introduce shortly. Even before the S R A C 25 years ago, starting back after World War II, the Chamber of Commerce and town officials realized that it would be useful to have a forum, an opportunity to share information and hear the concerns of our many seasonal residents. That has developed into this rather venerable tradition after 76 years of positive, even if sometimes constructively critical dialogue between town officials and summer residents. Those residents through the S R A C have a formal voice in town government, and I will now introduce the members. They did not sit in the order in which I have them. And I do know who all they are, all of them are, but I will read the list that I have in front of me. The chair is Jamie Mann, who is in Florida in the off-season, and Lyndon Tree Lane off of Route 28 when he is here. Catherine Malpha is participating remotely, I believe. Catherine is the vice chair. She is from Washington DC and off of Old Harbor Road when she's in town. Robin Laporkio is from Boston and has her Chatham residence downtown. Jeffrey Spalter is from Florida and Longboat Key and Barcliff Avenue when he is here. Roger Donald is also from Florida and lives in West Chatham when he was in Chatham. Joel Rotner, who is no longer the chairman, and we miss him and we thank him for his many efforts. Joel is in West Hartford and on Shore Road. Christina Mead is from Washington DC and her Chatham home is downtown. Mike Waters at the far end, lives in New York City and observes the fish pier very closely from his home on Barcliff Avenue. Phil Richardson is not here tonight physically, maybe participating remotely. He's from Tiburon, California, and also lives downtown. Ned Chapman, who I believe is participating remotely, is in Houston and has a home in Chatham on the Downstage Neck. Stuart Green is a relatively new member, also from Chestnut Hill outside of Boston, lives in the old village when he is in Chatham. And Gene Allen, a new member from Bethesda, Maryland, and Kelly Lane, sort of on the way to West Chatham. There are a number of town officials here this evening, but there are, I know, many who are not present physically but are participating remotely. I know that our fire chief, Dave DePasquale, is in the back row. Our town manager and our finance director, Alex Alella, are serving two jobs there in front. They'll be presenting, but they're also maneuvering the Microsoft Teams proceedings. And Leah Lacrosse, our community, where is Leah? I think she is here. She is in the rear. She's a new town employee as community services director. Thank you. I got that right. Wonders never cease. All five members of our select board are here. They are the town's elective body, executive body. Shereen Davis is participating remotely, but Mike Shell, Jeff Dykens, the chair, Corey Metters, and Dean Nacastro are in the rear of the room. They will be here to try to respond to any questions at the end of the several presentations. Cards have been given out, and if you have a question that you would like asked and you'd rather not ask it yourself, please write it down and pass it in. Maybe we can make arrangements to have somebody go through. Chief DePasquale will volunteer to do that. I assume that's why you're raising your hand. You have been volunteered, David.
I'm sorry. I didn't see him. I apologize. Our new police chief, Michael Anderson.
There are few things worse in life than leaving for a summer residence advisory committee to be held next to the police station and to realize that your left front headlight doesn't work. And then to fail to introduce the police chief. That's inexcusable, but these things happen. In any event, maybe the two chiefs can assist in coordinating the cards. With that, it is my pleasure to introduce the chair of the Summer Residence Advisory Committee, Jamie Mann.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Welcome to the 76th Summer Town Meeting. Before I get started, I'd like to recognize Steve DeBoer, who is an ex-member of this fine establishment. Anybody else by show of hand, smart enough to be an ex-member of the group here?
Hal.
Yes. Okay. Welcome.
Hal.
Hal is here. Okay. Hello, Hal. I don't have my glasses on. Okay. The summer town meeting not only serves as a recap for our committee, the things that we've worked on during the year, but more importantly, provides a forum for summer residents to express their issues, questions, and concerns, to engage with the select board and senior town officials. We do so many things, it's easy to get sidetracked when asked what SRAC is all about. I've found that if I use a six-S framework, it kind of keeps me in order. And so we've already heard about the first S, and that's the summer town meeting. The second S is for the skill set on this committee. To kind of set some perspective, the city of Fort Lauderdale, where I live when I'm not here in Chatham, has about 40-plus town committees. And that's the same as Chatham. Yet the city of Fort Lauderdale is 30 times larger in population than the town of Chatham. I know of a few of the town committees from a distance, but I'm intimately familiar with this committee. And the analytical, financial, and legal skill sets and the dedication and passion that this committee has is off the charts. And as we'll see tonight, you'll be the recipient of some of that skill set. The third S is for the speakers that speak at our weekly meetings. The town makes their best and senior people available to us speaking at our weekly meetings. Plus, we have outside interactions with the Fishermen's Alliance and the Chamber of Commerce to get their perspective on what's going on in this town. The next S is for the summer residents. Keep in mind that summer residents don't vote, and yet they pay the majority of taxes in this town and also contribute significantly to the charitable endeavors of this town. So we always keep that in mind. And I guess the logical question for summer residents to ask is, what does this committee do for us? And it provides summer residents with a voice, a go-to organization, if you will. The next S is for the select board. And the key byproduct of our work goes into giving the select board the views and perspectives of summer residents. The select board is very appreciative of the work that we do. The select board consistently references our work on affordable housing, council on aging, OPEB, and other topics. And the appreciation works both ways. Our committee has great respect for a select board that listens to us, and we are so impressed with their energy, time, and dedication to making Chatham a great place. The final S is for subcommittees. And this is the heart of what we do as far as looking into issues ranging from affordable housing to water quality, really diving deep into matters that we do. And this is done through six subcommittees. And using this subcommittee structure where we're able to take a position and make a case for or against town matters. Hopefully, these six Ss don't add up to the seventh S, which is a big pile of... The last thing I'd like to mention before I turn the meeting back to the moderator is that to keep us on point, we've posted our mission statement on the back of our nameplate, so it's always front and center. And I'll just read it to you. Give summer residents a voice. Give the select board the benefit of information and views. Give fresh outlooks to the town. And take a position and make a case for or against town matters. That's our mission statement. So it's on the back of all of our nameplates, and hopefully, everything that we do is consistent with our mission statement. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Jamie. I appreciate that. We will now hear from three town officials in order. First, the chair of the select board, Jeff Dykens.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. And greetings to the esteemed Summer Residence Advisory Committee and the rest of our summer residents that are here in person and/or online. I can speak on behalf of the select board that we really are all delighted that you're here and sharing your thoughts with us. It is not lost on the select board the incredible financial support that the non-residents provide to the town of Chatham. Thanks for supporting the town to the tune of some 67% of our property taxes. We certainly are reliant on your support, and we are very appreciative. I want to speak both to the social infrastructure of Chatham as well as the actual physical infrastructure of our town, and some of the challenges this select board faces as we create public policy in both arenas. I will share in brief some of what the select board has on its plate as goals and priorities going forward, all of which dovetail with the larger agenda this evening at SRAC. Major goal number one. We have had for some time now the desire to create a more diverse community of year-round residents who will staff our schools, our fire stations, man our fishing boats, and our police stations. We need young families and children to populate our schools and to ensure our future. The expansion of the voucher program and the creation of the Dr. Selden preschool support program are examples of how public policy can help under a great start. Support of our own elementary school is a strong signal to the Cape of Chatham's commitment to younger families. However, we might be more attractive to younger folks, but there just seriously are not enough places for them to live in Chatham. So we need to increase the stock of affordable and attainable housing. We need more workforce housing. Chatham is playing catch-up in this regard, I believe. One can argue that we have been, while still extraordinarily challenged, leaders in water and wastewater management, we have been perhaps laggards in the area of providing affordable, attainable housing. And it's funny, because Orleans is really the exact opposite. We do have some initiatives afoot. Habitat for Humanity is building two houses on George Ryder Road South. And we can't do much without land, which has been and is becoming even more scarce and more expensive. The good news is that we do have land as stepping stones via the generosity of the Montemoi Regional School Committee. We have land at Zero Meeting House Road via the generosity, frankly, of the Archdiocese of Fall River. And hopefully, in the very near future, the Buckley property in West Chatham will be available to us for development. But now, we need to develop all three. And this is a major league goal of this select board going forward. We need the support of our citizens and the talents of its best minds, including SRAC's input, as we strive to offer lower-cost housing for our younger residents and our employees. We have three home rule petitions that are awaiting to hear back from the general court that would assist greatly in these efforts. We have one that would like a transfer fee to provide permanent funding for our housing trust. We have another that reconstitutes in our housing trust itself. And we'd like the ability to use CPA funds for attainable housing as well as affordable housing. Major goal number two. Waste water and water, the physical infrastructure of the town, and frankly, the impact of climate change. Most notably, our challenges at present are seemingly an ever-present summertime drought condition coupled with a diminished municipal water supply. And of course, let's not forget the presence of PFAS. The town is focused on shorter-term mitigation, and I argue must focus on longer-term mitigation plans as well. The select board and town staff have crafted shorter-term tactical responses to immediate concerns. The shutdowns of Wells V and VIII. The town appropriated 1.4 million for the design and engineering of a new temporary water treatment facility for Well V. We brought Well V back online with that temporary PFAS mitigation. We brought Well IV online. We are in the process of revitalizing Wells X and XI. And we impose water conservation measures which are likely to get more stringent in the very near future. We are also planning the permanent PFAS treatment facility for Wells V and VIII. However, we need a master plan for fresh water for Chatham, and the select board has tasked a recently reconstructed water and sewer advisory committee with so doing. We will be meeting with them jointly tomorrow evening. I believe we need to take a more formal, regional, and coordinated approach with our neighboring towns of Harwich, Orleans, and Brewster, as all four of these towns, including us, share the one Montemoi lens. We continue to implement the long-range plan for our wastewater treatment and are leagues ahead of our neighboring towns in so doing. You can see palpable evidence of construction ongoing right now. You know, we have a plethora of other goals as well. The future of the council on aging is still outstanding. We have a meeting dedicated to it on August 16. We have staffing challenges aplenty, just like any other employer here in town. This is the most difficult labor market I've ever seen. We have parking issues. We have an ongoing subcommittee that are addressing parking issues, and Mr. Waters is a member of that committee. And our finances are always close at hand. We are dedicated and committed to keeping a solid financial foundation in this town. We enjoy a AAA bond rating from Standard and Poor's, and we certainly want to maintain that. And I do believe a very strong and excellent financial foundation. And I know the residential tax exemption is on the agenda this evening. You know, our job, I think, this year is to ask ourselves, is it could be, is it another tool in the toolbox to give younger families some financial relief that we should be using? While I've never supported a residential tax exemption in my nine years on the board, we will be taking a deeper dive on the issue this fall and look forward, and I really look forward to the discussion tonight. Provincetown, Wellfleet, Truro, Barnstable, and Nantucket have all instituted such an exemption, and we can certainly learn from them. We want all our summer residents to be assured that the select board is deeply committed to preserving and enhancing the quality of life in our beautiful town despite the numerous challenges we all face together. And I thank you very much for your time tonight and your kind attentions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jeff. It's now my pleasure to introduce our town manager, Jill Goldsmith, and with her, our finance director, Alex Alella.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And Chair Dykens is always a tough act to follow, so we're going to go a little deeper into some of the items that he had presented. And thank you, Team Chatham, our department heads who are here, as well as those that are participating virtually. Okay, so here we are. There we go. So this is where we were in June of 2021. It was our third town meeting on the field, outdoors under COVID protocols. And at that meeting, we had about 750 voters attending. We had three more town meetings on the field, including this past May, May 14, with 701 voters who spent most of their Saturday working through the most important issues of the town. And a tremendous effort by town staff and our dedicated voters, in-person town meetings are required by mass general law. There's no provision for absentee town meeting voting. So as we tried to navigate through COVID and have these in-person town meetings, we just called it "back to basics." And this is probably how our forefathers and mothers had participated. So a very exciting time for us and very productive town meetings. And also, I want to just note that Chatham is an open town meeting. There had been some questions about why we couldn't do a remote town meeting, and it's part of our general law and how our town is established as an open town meeting. So here we are, and we might be there again, but we figured it out. So thanks to all the voters who participated. Select Board Chair Dykens had mentioned our state-of-the-town value statements, and we review these every year. And in particular during COVID, value statements, A, about the financial health, F, about demographic diversity, and assessing the needs of younger and senior populations, and G, for enhancing relationships and communications, were very important to us. As we move through the COVID budget, financial plan that Alex will get into in a little bit, we saw that E became very important to us, and that was to protect the environmental quality of the town and the drinking water supply. Dr. Bob will speak about this tonight, about protecting our drinking water supply in more detail. Annual goal categories are updated every year, and we did that twice last year, mid-year, in July and December, just to check in to make sure that we were on target. that we were on target with the Select Board's goals and our financial plans. And the goals and objectives are posted on the website. The current cycle is calendar year 2022 and also FY '23. And you can see that on the website, as well as past goals and objectives that have been voted, as well as a status report for that. Social infrastructure has been a priority for us. We talk a little bit about the childcare voucher program, our elementary school, our Dr. Florence Family Support Program, human service offerings, housing, and recommendations from the Board's Chatham 365 Tax Force that they had established prior to COVID. But certainly in 2019, all of the recommendations were very important to us and very on target. And the Select Board has also looked at some of their committee charges and approved a new name and mission for the Chatham Energy Committee to the Chatham Energy and Climate Action Committee to be more consistent with the values and statements in these schools' categories. And they're all available online. So our year starts and begins with our budget review. And today's meeting usually kicks off our budget process of looking back and looking forward. So if we look back to last year, we had our Budget Summit back on October 26. And this is attended by the Select Board, the Finance Committee, our Montemoy Regional School District Committee and Administration, Town Staff, and the public. And this is where we look back on our scorecard of how we did and anything we need to tweak or reevaluate moving forward. And as you just saw, the Select Board voted value statements and goals and objectives. They typically do that in the fall, and last year was by December 14. We also look at our capital improvement program and priorities. We had a reprioritizing meeting on July 13 last year, and then we continue that review through FY '23 budget review process. We're currently in FY '23. And then, from that, we make a submittal in January. Alex and I work with our team of department heads and staff on putting together budgets under a directive, also looking at the budget book of noting our prior year accomplishments, grants that have been received, as well as putting forward our staffing and our organization charts so that the public has great insight into what we do. And that leads us for quite a while through April, right before town meeting. And what we did last year is we also had our S&amp;P bond rating reaffirmed. This is the process that we go through when we need to borrow funds, and a low bond rating makes it more affordable for the town. This is the highest municipal rating for, this is the highest bond rating for municipalities. We're very proud of that. It was established long ago, and Alex has worked really hard to maintain that bond rating. And then we have the town meeting on the field, which you had just seen. And all of this information is posted on the town's website. So we're not, we can't tape town meeting live, but we do have it recorded. So if, for some reason, you wanted to catch it, it is usually pretty quick with our Channel 18 staff. The next day, you can check that out. And then we post a scorecard of action that's unofficial, but we have it on the website as soon as possible to keep everybody connected. So community initiatives and social infrastructure, and you're hearing us say that a lot tonight, were a priority. The Chatham Elementary School Alternative Investment, this was additional funding by Chatham for our elementary school. And it was an important decision by the Select Board, who participated in community forums as well as joint meetings with the Town of Harwich and the Montemoy Regional School District to come to this decision of looking how to best fund our elementary school. A feeder to that program is our new program, the Dr. Selden Preschool Family Support Program. We funded that at $425,000 on the tax rate. And this program provides families, Chatham residents, with three-year-olds, as of August 31 of a school year, $5,000 per child. And for four-year-olds, $10,000 per child, paid directly to the preschool providers. So what happens is the family participates, joins a preschool, and a portion of that is billed to the town, and we pay the preschool directly. So we thought that would be, for the first year, a really great program. And we'll monitor that to see the usage, and if we need to enhance it, that's certainly what we'll consider for this fall for our budget review. The Childcare Voucher Program is an interesting program. It's available to Chatham residents and to people who work in the Town of Chatham. And this could be a toddler up into an 18-year-old. And the typical rewards are about $2,000, and it covers summer camp and programs that are after-hours to allow for working families to work the challenging schedule that they do in Chatham over the summer. So this is something that has been in place for about seven years, but recently enhanced to $100,000 as a town contribution. And then, looking at our full complement of constituents, we're looking at the Council on Aging Senior Center. The Select Board had directed the town manager, myself and staff, to look at a feasibility study for 193 Stony Hill and 702 Main Street, which is the, Stony Hill is the existing COA, and the community center is located on Main Street. And they gave a specific direction. And the Board is having a joint meeting with the Council on Aging Board of Directors next week on Tuesday, August 16. And that will be a hybrid meeting, so televised live, in person, and available through Teams. I also work to look at our staffing and how we provide services and to align staffing with the goals that the Select Board and community vision statements. And this year, I did an administrative order where I combined the Departments of Recreation and Beaches and the Council on Aging to be one new department, the Department of Community Services. You saw Leah here tonight. She's been on with us for three weeks and is already making great progress with the team. And we were able to do this because of the retirement of a long-serving Director of Parks and Recreation, Dan Tobin. He retired in January after 37 years. And then there was a vacancy through our Council on Aging Director, Mandy Speakman, who joined the county, who can also provide us services. But with that, those vacancies, we were able to look at the operations. And that information is also available online. And as we've mentioned a couple of times, the housing initiatives that Director of Community Development, Katie Donovan, will speak in more detail about tonight. And these are the addresses of the properties that we have acquired and with a new, for the first time, a Housing Sustainability Director starting in just a couple of weeks, on August 22. So we're very excited about that. So now, I'm going to turn this over to Alex to talk about our COVID financial plan and where we are now. Alex, on the better way.
Thank you, Jill. Yes, as Jill mentioned, we've been under COVID for several years. We're coming out of it now, we hope. But when we started in the spring of 2020, and we had presented the budget in March, made the presentation, and then things changed. And we, I think, went through four reiterations of the, what we call the COVID budget pivot, and came up with budgeting in the unknown for FY 2021. Every forecast we looked at said that COVID was going to be with us for at least two fiscal years, meaning FY '21, '22, and possibly '23. So we did know that our financial future was uncertain. So FY 2021 was budgeted in the unknown. We were very conservative in our budgets. We slashed any new initiatives out of the budget. We had proposed new staff at that time. And we just bare-bones budgeted and slashed everything, as I said. FY 2022, again, not knowing what was going to happen with COVID still being with us, was the COVID core services budget. So a little bit more robust budget. We increased our local estimated receipts. We were a little bit less cautious as we had been. And then, moving into the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2023, is now budgeting for a resilient and sustainable future. So we did have a growth budget for FY 2023, which allowed for some realignments of services, new positions, and, as I said, a growth budget as we move out of the pandemic. Built on that, our financial outlook. Financial outlook is very strong. Our revenues, we've had strong collections in local receipts, taxes, and grants for FY 2022, which just ended on June 30. Of note of those, the short-term rental tax, which was implemented a few years ago, collected over $1.6 million in revenue for the town. Traditional lodging, hotel motel tax, collected 2.1. And the meals tax, which is at 0.75%, was again up. So you can see that the economy, the local economy, has rebounded. So $561,000 versus $350,000 last year. And we do increase those local estimated receipts for FY 2024, as we look at that. And that does provide some relief to the tax rate. Expenditures, again, as I mentioned, we did have a resilient and sustainable service budget, which did allow for some growth. It was a 6.05% increase. That does not mean that your tax rate will increase by 6.05, again, because we increased the local estimated receipts to provide relief. Our reserves, we have strong reserves in compliance with our financial policies. Our OPEB reserves are strong. The stabilization fund, as well as what is known as the undesignated fund balance, or free cash. Our capital budget, FY 2023 capital budget was $2.5 million, funded solely through available funds. And this is part of the five-year capital plan that we have every year. And we start with Budget Summit, looking out five years and possibly 10 for some of the larger projects. For FY 2022, the valuation, we had an increase of just about 10% in valuation for the town, which, as your values go up, the tax rate goes down. So again, values, and I think this will be, SRAC will speak to this a little bit later, that Chatham values are very high, and our tax rate is very low in comparison to the other towns on the Cape. We've talked about the S&amp;P Standard &amp; Poor's bond rating. And again, AAA was reaffirmed, and we're very pleased with this. Again, as Jill mentioned, this is something that we really take pride in, making sure that, you know, we have good financial standing with the bond rating companies, because it does equate to lower interest rates. So in March, we were reaffirmed for the AAA rating. And that was due, we went out for that because we were refunding our general obligation bonds from 2012. So we refunded $12.4 million in bonds, which resulted in a savings of just over $1,453,000 with no extension to the term of those bonds. So we didn't extend them out. It's the same term that they had. And what's known as a true interest cost on that was at 2.187%. We were hoping to go out a little earlier because we knew that interest rates were rising, but 2.18 was very good. So again, savings of $1.4 million over the life of the loans. And we have here a link to the bond rating. Everything is posted on our website if you want to read what Standard &amp; Poor's had to say. Some of the highlights were that we have a very strong economy, very strong management with strong financial policies, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility. That has to do with our reserves. Very strong liquidity. We have adequate debt and long-term liabilities. Our long-term liabilities being the OPEB liability, which are other post-employment benefits, which we are obligated to pay for current employees when they retire, and strong institutional framework score. So again, all this was due to our conservative budgeting. Our COVID financial recovery plan were mentioned. Standard &amp; Poor's has asked about cybersecurity and coastal resiliency planning efforts. And all these contributed to maintaining that AAA bond rating. Part of our budget is the Capital Improvements Plan and Projects. And beginning in 2019, we looked to identify all projects coming in the future with the help of the Callan Center. I think we've mentioned this, for those of you who have been in attendance before, we've mentioned the Callan Center plan. And we keep that, we update that every year. So for FY 2023, it included FY 2023 through '27 for the five-year capital investment plan and inventoried all projects, regardless of the funding source, whether it's through the Community Preservation Act, Chapter 90 for highways, the Water Department, or funded through debt. And it was about $45 million identified for those five years. For our capital definition, the project must be greater than $10,000 in cost and have a life expectancy of greater than five years. And we have to be able to issue debt for the expense. So the capital budget for FY 2022 was, I'm sorry, FY 2023 was $2,556,600, well within the 9% of the operating budget. It came in just at 6.7% of the operating budget, which is in line with our financial policies. And it's important for us to adhere to those financial policies because, as we mentioned, that's something that Standard &amp; Poor's looks at when they review our rating every year. And then we have capital articles that are funded outside of the CIP, but are included in that entire listing of the $45 million. And those are what are called standalone articles, either because they might be for dredging, which might not have a five-year life, and/or, I'm sorry, capital, excuse me, might not have a five-year life, excuse me. So it's not COVID, I promise. So the FY 2023 capital budget, we have specific categories, which we look at when we're reviewing all the competing projects. How do they preserve enhanced town assets, increase the efficiency and effectiveness of government, be a good steward of public resources? The impact on the operating budget, whether it be negative or positive. Will it cost us more money to implement this, or will it save us money? And then what we have, known as the community value or the Chatham factor. And all these categories have certain rating criteria or certain numeric value, yeah, metric, to rate them. And so, because we have all these competing projects, so how would we say, what gets funded and what doesn't? So in addition, each project was evaluated, how it would influence key policy areas for the Town of Chatham, which is the Chatham factor. And these include aesthetics and historic preservation, cultural and recreational opportunities, utilization by the community, contextually appropriate economic opportunity, youth and families, environmental sustainability, public health, and public safety. So again, we look at these every year when we're looking at the five-year capital plan, as well as the one annual budget, capital budget. So as we mentioned, the coastal resiliency is one of the focuses that the bond ratings look at and is also something that the Select Board has as a goal. So coastal resiliency and access. And we've been very successful in getting grants over the past few years and continuing for FY 2023 and beyond. for FY 2023 and beyond. We received $550,000 in grant funds for dredging Stage Harbor, as well as a $400,000 investment from the capital budgets and standalone article for dredging grants. We received $245,519 for coastal resiliency grants, for the Pleasant Bay Living Shorelines, the Jackknife Beach Salt Marsh Restoration, and beach nourishment, which will help mitigate coastal erosion. And these will develop a detailed analysis of potential shoreline and management options, that's another grant. We were also very successful, we had a standalone article this year for $850,000, which is a local match, a 25% match, to get federal funds to help us fund $3.21 million in projects for fiscal years 2022 through 2025, and possibly beyond. And these include salt marsh restoration, a fish passage, and shellfish stormwater projects. And then moving on to another goal of the Select Board, and a concern to, I think, everyone who drinks the water in Chatham, is to protect and enhance our drinking water supply. As you might be aware, we have conservation measures that the Select Board have authorized. So for irrigation, including well irrigation, will be Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, and those will be reviewed again, as noted by the Select Board, August 10th, tomorrow night. As the Chair Dykens mentioned, we did have PFAS treatment, so a temporary and permanent solution we're looking for for wells five and eight. Special Town Meeting in October 2021 was focused all on water, so approved the 1.4 million, which would help the temporary mitigation for a new plant, until the new plant and design and engineering funds for that new treatment plant for wells five and eight. So, happy to say that that is well underway. And then new well development. Wells 10 and 11 were started many years ago and stopped, so $4.5 million was approved to complete the construction. That will be supplemented by remaining authorizations for the development of those wells. And Dr. Dunkinson is on the phone tonight, or the team's meeting, and there's more information will be provided. And I'm turning it back to Jill now.
Thanks, Alex. So keeping our community connected is very important to us, and it started with COVID, with a weekly update, a community update that we were putting out, and then it turned into a newsletter that are more current events, a little more broad in what we highlight. So definitely the action of the Select Board, especially the water conservation efforts, any great news, we had a great public safety awards recognition, we had pictures of that, and a summary of the heroic efforts of our public safety professionals, and just various items that we try to highlight on a weekly basis, again, to keep the community connected. And then our website, which is an award-winning website from the Mass Municipal Association, we've done a lot of work to update that, that's through our IT department, as well as Shawna Neely in our office, working on communications. So here are the links that we have for various communications, and we still are doing COVID updates, COVID updates and posting those materials. Budget Central, you've seen us reference that, it's in our budget books, in our budget presentations, and that catalog goes back almost 20 years of financial information. Town Meeting Central is where you'll find the Town Meeting warrant, as well as the results, and the Town Manager Monthly Department Head reports to the Select Board, that's also there, and it's really a great insight into all town operations. It's about 60 pages, and great metrics, and great tipics on items that we don't necessarily update the board on at an official meeting, but this provides a good in-between update while projects are under development or in construction. And our financial transparency, it's Open Gov, this is one of the items that the bond, the AAA bond rating, that is, I'm sorry, is valued by the bond rating agencies for AAA-rated communities, and we were one of the first communities to implement this. So this is where anyone from the public can go look at, see what the balance of the budget is for the various departments, and keep track of that on a daily basis if you want. And also, I just wanted to note, too, that we use our community voice surveys, we have a survey active right now on those with irrigation meters, as well as rebranding of the senior center or council on aging. There's a hard copy form for that, if you want to take a look at that today, or you can visit the website or any of the town offices to get that. And this is our last slide, it's how to keep connected with social media, so Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, and then you can also subscribe to news alerts through the website. If you visit Notifyme, it will get you everywhere you need to go to sign up and remain connected. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jill and Alex, as well as Chairman Dykens. I don't know whether, Jill, you need to connect Dr. Bob, or whether he can do it through other people, because I think he is next.
I think Channel 18 behind us.
Channel 18 can do most things. Our next speaker is Dr. Bob Dunkinson. Bob has worked for the town about as long as Dan Tobin, who just retired after 37 years. Bob is our Director of Health and the Environment, with a wide array of natural resources and public health issues, and there is Dr. Dunkinson.
Just for my own edification, was Katie Donovan doing affordable housing before me?
I apologize, I apologize, Bob, and you are correct. But I knew you could cover while Katie got ready, and there she is, Katie Donovan, Director of Community Development, who will talk about affordable and attainable housing initiatives.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Katie Donovan, I'm the Director of Community Development for the town, and I'll be providing you with an update tonight on the town's affordable and attainable housing initiatives that have been mentioned by Select Board Chair Dykens, as well as Town Manager Jill Goldsmith. So if you'll give me a moment, I'm just going to share my screen, and I will be right back. Okay, so hopefully everybody can see my screen at this point in time. So again, thank you very much for having me here this evening. Again, just a little bit of background, so the Select Board had identified a community goal to address the lack of affordable and attainable housing in town. And we also have a 2018 Housing Production Plan that identifies the needs and provides strategies to meet that goal. Our Housing Production Plan also emphasized the decline in population, especially in the 18 to 44-year-old demographic. So as was stated earlier, the Chatham 365 Task Force was created by the Select Board to identify the problem and help the town shift its policies and planning to help preserve the character and the heart of the town. And coincidentally, or maybe not so much, many of the 365 recommendations actually align with our Housing Production Plan. So while a major goal of the Housing Production Plan is to eventually meet the state's 10% affordability threshold under Chapter 40B, another important goal is to serve the full range of local housing needs. Consequently, there are instances where housing initiatives might be promoted to meet community needs that will not necessarily result in the inclusion of units in the subsidized housing inventory, and that is what we refer to as attainable housing. The Chapter 40B Comprehensive Permit Program allows developers to override local zoning if the project meets certain requirements. First, if the municipality has less than 10% of its year-round housing stock defined as affordable in its subsidized housing inventory, or second, if the housing production goals are not met. If Chatham meets the 10% requirement, the town can reject unfriendly 40B applications. Chatham's subsidized housing inventory includes 178 affordable housing units, representing 5.14% of the total year-round housing stock of 3,460 units. So Chatham defines affordable housing as housing for occupants that make below 100% of the area median income for Barnstable County, which is currently $115,600. Community preservation funds and Affordable Housing Trust funds can only be used to fund projects up to 100% area median income. And Chatham is also need of attainable housing options for citizens that qualify for housing up to 200% of the area median income. Chatham defines attainable housing as housing for occupants that make above the 100% area median income for Barnstable County, and it's capped at the 200% area median income. And again, for FY 2022, the 100% area median income in Barnstable County for a family of four is $115,600, and if you double that, basically, is how the calculation is done, the 200% area median income for a family of four is $231,200. So that does sound like a lot of money. However, the reason we look at creating attainable housing options for those up to 200% AMI is that HUD income limits change on a yearly basis. And as I stated, the area median income for Barnstable County is currently $115,600, but last year it was $89,300. Then the year before that, it was $96,600. Over the next few years, as we look to develop housing, we need to, we need to be able to be flexible as those annual income limits fluctuate. So, our current initiatives, Select Board Chair Dykens touched on this a little bit, as did Town Manager Goldsmith, we are currently looking to develop three parcels of land for affordable and attainable housing. The first two that I'll talk about were offered to the town for purchase, after the town issued a request for proposals for private land suitable for affordable and or attainable housing. We have continued, we have issued the RFP four times in the past two years, most recently just a few weeks ago. For the first, the first response we received, the first RFP, we received two responses, and actually, one of those offers was actually withdrawn. The second RFP, we didn't receive any responses. The third, we received one response, again, which I will talk about this evening, and again, the RFP is out currently, and those proposals are due back to the town on August 26th. So first, there's a parcel of land, 1533 and Zero Main Street, also known to many as the Buckley property. I'll outline it here with my mouse. This parcel is approximately two and a half acres. This area here will be removed, it's about 20,000 square feet, and that parcel will remain with the family. The parcel is approximately two and a half acres, and the purchase price is $1,375,000. This parcel will be purchased using half, half of the funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and half of the funds for free cash. Annual Town Meeting 2021 authorized this expenditure from free cash. The property to be purchased is approximately two and a half acres and has town sewer available. This next parcel is the most recent parcel that was offered to the town, and it was offered to the town by the Diocese of Fall River, and I'm outlining it here with my mouse here. This parcel has approximately three to three and a half acres of buildable land. The purchase price of this parcel is $525,000. This will be funded 100% through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so the units that will be built will be 100% affordable. And again, this property is being purchased from the Diocese of Fall River. And so this next parcel is what we refer to as the Stepping Stones Road parcel. Again, it's on Stepping Stones Road, it is bound by Stepping Stones Road, and also the Old Colony Rail Trail, as you'll see here. This parcel is approximately 2.2 acres and does have town sewer available. This land was part of the Monomoy Regional School District lease agreement, and the school committee has actually voted to declare this parcel surplus. So in order for us to change the purpose for which the land is held, the Select Board must vote to determine that the land is no longer needed for the specific purchase for which it was initially required. And then we'll also need a vote of Town Meeting to change the authorization for which the property is then held. Some other initiatives that we're looking at, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees have requested that the Planning Board explore zoning bylaw amendments, as recommended by our Housing Production Plan, that will allow for the creation of various housing units. And these may include revisions to the current bylaw relating to multifamily zoning, apartments incidental to commercial use, and exploring small lot zoning that would allow small lots to be developed for housing, and in return would be de-restricted for affordable housing in perpetuity. As was mentioned, we had filed special legislation, or home rule petitions, for three pieces of special legislation that, if passed, would aid the town in the creation of affordable and attainable housing. These home rule petitions are specific to Chatham, and were first authorized by Annual Town Meeting in 2021. All three pieces of legislation are making their way through the legislative process. However, it was recommended that Town Meeting 2022 reauthorize these home rule petitions in the event that they were not passed in the current legislative session, which is actually what has happened. So these bills can be taken up in the next legislative session, because they have a current vote from the town. So the first one I'll talk about is House Bill 4058, and this Town Meeting voted to authorize, and then reauthorize, the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation authorizing the use of community preservation funds for both affordable and attainable housing for persons and families whose annual income is less than 200% of the area median income. Currently, the CPA statute only allows CPA funds to be used to fund projects for persons and families whose annual income is less than the 100% area median income. An authorization of CPA funds used for efforts to create housing for persons and families within the 200% AMI income limit would help the town of Chatham create both types of housing opportunities to help keep our generational, young, and working families in Chatham. Oh, House Bill 4059 is a new housing trust bill, and this special legislation would create one housing trust for both affordable and attainable housing. Our current Affordable Housing Trust, again, can only fund projects up to 100% of the area median income. The creation of one trust with two funding sources will be able to better serve the needs of the community by building upon our current Affordable Housing Trust, and should the legislation be approved, guidelines and an application package similar to the current Affordable Housing Trust will be established. House Bill 4060 is for a community housing fee, a real estate transfer fee dedicated to affordable and attainable housing. And the special legislation is to authorize imposition of a fee upon the transfer of real property situated in the town to provide a supplemental source of funding to create and preserve affordable and attainable housing. Though we have a dedicated source of funding for the creation of affordable housing, we do not currently have a dedicated source of funding for much-needed attainable housing, and this fee would provide that funding. Again, as Town Manager Goldsmith noted, we're really excited to announce our new Housing and Sustainability Director position. This position will lead initiatives that promote Chatham's housing goals and policies, manage housing programs, and manage housing programs that ensure Chatham's environmental, housing, and economic sustainability. And our next steps, so again, the Select Board forwarded the home rule petitions to Representative Sarah Peak's office for the, for refiling. We've got the request for proposals for acquisition of private property, that's been reissued, and proposals are due on August 26th. And the town is engaged with Judy Barrett from Barrett Planning Group, who along with town staff, will conduct a series of community outreach meetings beginning early this fall. And the community engagement will help to determine the number and types of units that will be built on the Main Street and Meeting House Road properties. The current contract with Barrett Consulting Group is for those two properties specifically. And then what we will do at that point in time is develop an RFP that will be specific as to what we want to see built on those properties, and seek a developer to come in and work with the town to create that much-needed housing. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Katie. An obviously important issue, as is that which now I will ask Dr. Bob Dunkinson to speak about, which is potable water.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Moderator, thank you, the members of the committee. Let me share my screen here, and we will get started with our conversation on the town's drinking water, or town's water situation. So, just quickly, I thought one of the things I would do is just give people, you know, we have a lot of folks from out of town, and sometimes out of the state, and not everybody knows where their drinking water comes from here in Chatham. Obviously, you know, it's kind of an interesting question, considering we are surrounded on four sides by water for Cape Cod as a whole, and Chatham is surrounded on three sides by water. Only our connection with our neighboring town of Harwich is not a water connection. And primarily, we get our water from the rain, and I don't know about you guys, but it's raining where I live right now, here on the Cape, which is great news, considering we haven't seen it for several weeks, and hopefully it will continue to rain as this little storm makes its way out towards the east and towards Chatham. But one of the bigger questions, or one of the bigger issues we have is Cape Cod is a sole-source aquifer, meaning we do not have any other source for drinking water other than what lies beneath our feet. Unlike the city of Boston, it gets their drinking water from the Quavon Reservoir, New York, which gets theirs from upstate New York, we don't have any connections with any other place to get water from other than what lies beneath Cape Cod, and as you can see on this map, that led to the EPA designation many decades ago of Cape Cod being a sole-source aquifer, meaning more than 50% of our water comes from beneath our feet, and we don't have any other way of getting drinking water. So, while the entirety of the Cape is a sole-source aquifer, we don't all we don't all on the Cape get our drinking water from the same place. There are actually, as shown on this figure, six what we call groundwater lenses that provide drinking water to various areas on the Cape. The largest being the Sagamore Lens, which really encompasses everything from Yarmouth westward into Mashpee, Barn, Falmouth, et cetera. Chatham is part of the Montemoy Lens, which we share with the neighboring towns of Harwich, Orleans, Brewster, Dennis, and part of Yarmouth. So basically that is the share of the water supply that lies beneath us. And as you can see from this figure, the groundwater lens is basically a high point. The point is right about over in Brewster and Harwich. And that thin line right in the middle there is basically Route 6A. So you can consider Route 6A as being the dividing line for the Montemoy Lens. And then from there, the groundwater radiates out in all directions towards either Cape Cod Bay or Nantucket Sound. And you might say, well, how do we all know this? Well, on the Cape, we have a very interesting phenomenon in that most of our ponds on the Cape are what's known as kettle hole ponds. And these basically provide a window to the aquifer. So when you see the various ponds that we have in Chatham and throughout the Cape and you see the levels in those ponds, that is reflective of the water level in the aquifer under the ground. And if you've been to any of our ponds recently, you will know that most of the ponds, in fact, all the ponds are well below their normal ranges. And that's reflective of the drought that we've been experiencing for the last couple of summers and continuing into this summer. And I'll speak to that in a little bit further on. So as I indicated, there is significant groundwater underneath our feet here on the Cape. We have anywhere from 300 to 400 feet of groundwater. Because while the Cape is basically a big sandbar, it is underlaid by bedrock. And so if you go down 300 or 400 feet through the sand, you will encounter the bedrock and that basically forms the bottom of the various aquifers. So underneath the Cape is this area of freshwater and it's basically held in place both on the Nantucket Sound side and the Cape Cod Bay side by the saline marine waters that tend to be more dense. So they keep the freshwater basically underneath the land area and then it gradually mixes right at the shoreline with some of that marine water. Groundwater flow on the Cape, as I said, the dividing line is roughly the mid-Cape Highway. Groundwater flow on the Cape is approximately a foot per day. So think about some water that starts out at Route 6A and then moving a foot per day either towards Cape Cod Bay or Nantucket Sound and has the potential to pick up contaminants and other materials as it makes that trip. So in order to protect our groundwater, most of the public water supplies on the Cape are protected by what's known as wellhead protection areas. And as you can see on this figure here, all those kind of various shaped pinkish land areas are the various wellhead protection areas for the public water supply wells that are on Cape Cod. And you can see there's a fair number of those public water supply wells. The only town that does not have any, or at least when this figure was put together, did not have any was Eastham and Provincetown. Provincetown getting their water from Truro and Eastham relying primarily on private wells. But most of the other towns in the Cape do have public water systems and therefore have any number of public water supply wells. In Chatham, we have nine public water supply wells. We have wells one, two, and three in South Chat, which were the original wells put in many years ago by the former Chatham Water Company. Up until the mid-1980s, the water system here in Chatham was privately owned. And then in the mid-1980s, the town bought the water system from the private company and turned it into a public water supply system. So wells one, two, and three, they were put in beginning in 1945, one in 1949, and then one in 1966. So they are the three oldest wells that we have in our system. And then well number four, known as the Indian Hill Well, is just right up back behind where some of you are meeting tonight in the Town Annex. That well was installed in 1970 and 72. And that is actually one of our largest production wells in terms of the volume that we can get from that well when it's operational, when it's fully operational. We have wells five, six, seven, eight, and nine. Wells five and eight are what's known as the Training Field Well Site. You can see that's located on town property just by Lover's Lake. And then wells six, seven, and nine are all in what's known as the Town Forest at the western boundary of Chatham. And what we're going to talk about a little bit, wells 10 and 11 are just south of Mill Pond, which is up in the northwest corner of the town. And they are also in an area known as the Town Forest or part of the Town Forest. Just to zoom in a little bit on the wellhead protection zones, Zones One and Zones Two. Zone One is just basically the 400-foot radius around the public water supply well. And the operator of the public water supply has to own that 400-foot radius outright to make sure that no private development can take place in that area. And then the Zone Two, so those various blue-shaped areas, those are the areas, and this is important this time of the year, those are the areas from which water is drawn into the well when it's at its maximum pumping capacity and under drought conditions. So you can see that for most of the Chatham wells, those Zone Twos actually extend up into Harwich as far as Hawx Nest State Park and some of the various ponds there. So, you know, that's why Chatham and most towns have an interest in what their neighboring towns are doing because these Zone Twos don't matter town boundaries. They are naturally defined. They are defined by USGS and consultants using computer models that when these wells are in full production, this is where potentially you could be drawing water from. Now, you will notice there are some wells in Chatham, such as wells five and eight, immediately adjacent to Lover's Lake. Their Zone Two is entirely in Chatham. So it's, you know, that's our full responsibility when you have a well Zone Two that's entirely in your own town. Just to give you another sense, this is our Water Resource Protection District, which was included as an addition to our zoning bylaw back in the early 2000s. And basically it encompasses the entirety of all the individual Zone Twos. Put them all together and you get this kind of yellow shaded area. So all those properties there are within the Zone Twos and within the Water Resource Protection District within the town of Chatham. And that wellhead, that Water Resource Protection District specifies what kind of land uses can take place, what kind of density can take place, all geared towards protecting the public water supply in the future. One interesting thing to note is just west of the Chatham-Harwich line, that area where the word Harwich is, that is Harwich's well field. So, you know, we're very lucky that our neighboring town has their well field immediately adjacent to one of our large well fields. So we're assured that there will be future protection of that area. As well as, as I indicated, it does go up to Hawx Nest State Park, State Park. So we know that that area will also be protected in the future. Now, what capacity do we have? That's always a question we have, you know, because we've heard over the last couple of years with PFOS and all, that Chatham, we didn't have a water shortage because as I indicated, the entirety of Cape Cod is underlaid by 300 to 400 feet of groundwater. And USGS has estimated that all the public water supply wells on the Cape in their entirety are only utilizing about 5% of all the water that's underneath our feet. What we have in Chatham and what we've experienced the last year or so is an infrastructure shortage, if you will. So if we look at this graph, it's currently shown, the first bar on the left, if wells one through nine, which are our current nine wells, were all pumped to capacity, and by capacity we mean they are pumped 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we would have about 7.7 million gallons a day available. But you don't want to pump your wells 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It puts too much strain on the equipment. It puts too much strain on the aquifer and I'll show you that in a second. So generally, you don't want to pump any more than about 16 hours a day. And so the next bar over is wells one through nine under normal pumping capacity or roughly 16 hours a day. And in that case, we would have a little over 5.1 million gallons of water available. We're going to talk about wells 10 and 11 a little bit in a minute. But when, once we bring wells 10 and 11 online and we pump them at maximum capacity, it would be up to about 8.7 million gallons a day. Because together, wells 10 and 11 account for about a million gallons a day of capacity. And so in the final graph on the right-hand side of the final bar, with wells 10 and 11 online and all those wells, one through 11, pumping at normal capacity, we're just shy of 6 million gallons, yeah, 6 million gallons a day. The dotted line in the middle is, was our peak day in July of 2010. You can see we were pumping about 4.2 million gallons a day. So under all these scenarios, we would have enough water to meet the peak demand. Now, obviously you say, why July 2010? This figure was originally put together when we were looking at the new water treatment plant that we were designing for wells six, seven, and nine. I've looked at these numbers again recently. We don't have good numbers right now because, as you know, the last two summers, we've had various water restrictions in place. We've been in drought conditions. So we don't have a good new peak day, but we're looking into getting some of that data pulled together right now. And then you can also see the solid red line. That was maximum daily average for July and August of 2015. That at the time was one of our busier summers. So that was on a daily basis. So under all these scenarios, provided that none of the wells get shut down for other reasons, bacterial contamination, pump failure, or anything like that, Chatham has plenty of pumping capacity available to meet the demands. Just quickly, you know, we talked about septic systems and their potential for contaminants, both to private wells but also to public water supply wells. The important figure here is the one in the upper right, which basically says, as development increases, the levels of nitrate in the water, drinking water increase, and also the level of other potential contaminants such as pharmaceuticals. You know, we all take various medications in today's day and age for any number of conditions. And a significant portion of that is excreted in our waste, which ends up in your septic system, which potentially ends up in the groundwater. So we clearly see some of these things occurring. And this is one of the things that we are addressing through the wastewater project. I won't talk about this one. Let's talk about PFOS because I know that's a current topic of significant interest. Massachusetts DEP issued their PFOS regulation on October 2nd, 2020. Prior to that, there was no standard for PFOS in drinking water in Massachusetts other than a federal health advisory, which was not a standard. It was only a health advisory. Massachusetts issued an MCL, or Maximum Contaminant Level, of 20 nanograms per liter, which equates to parts per trillion. So think about that. We're talking a couple of drops in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, to put it in perspective. Basically, the scientific testing technology had gotten so good, we were able to measure these contaminants at the parts per trillion level. So Massachusetts was one of the first states in the Union to issue a standard for PFOS. They did not issue it for all the PFOS compounds. There's about 40 or 50 different forms of PFOS. Massachusetts did issue it for what they are calling PFOS 6, which were the six primary PFOS contaminants of concern to the state. And as part of that new standard that Massachusetts issued, it required water purveyors of different sizes to begin testing at different points in time. Chatham, because of the size of our system, was required to start testing in April of 2021. We did so. We immediately detected PFOS 6 in well number five above the maximum contaminant level. And so that well was immediately taken offline. And then we continued testing, even though the state only required quarterly testing. We were testing on a monthly basis. And in September, we detected PFOS 6 in well number eight, also above the maximum contaminant level. And that well was immediately taken offline. So by September of 2021, we had taken two fairly significant production wells, public production wells, offline. We were in the beginnings of the drought situation in summer 2021. And so the Board of Selectmen acting as Water and Sewer Commissioners implemented a number of various water conservation measures. As already indicated, in October of that year, there was a special Town Meeting and $4.5 million was appropriated for completion of wells 10 and 11. And $1.4 million was appropriated for temporary PFOS treatment in wells five and eight and design of a treatment facility. Now, there's more history to wells 10 and 11. Wells 10 and 11 were originally identified back in the early 1990s. The town did a study back then to look at the entire town and identify potential future well sites, recognizing that more capacity would be needed due to ongoing development in town. And so wells, the site at wells 10 and 11 was the site that was chosen based on that study. And the well casings were actually installed at the site. However, when additional sampling was done at that site in those new well casings, prior to the well pumps being put in and the buildings for the treatment being installed, MTBE was detected, which as you probably are aware, was a gasoline additive for many years. And so any further work on wells 10 and 11 was paused while additional testing and all was taking place to determine a potential source of the MTBE and what may happen to it over time. Keep in mind, groundwater moves roughly a foot per day. So there was some thought that, you know, sooner or later, any potential contaminants would break down naturally and move beyond the capture zone for the wells. So, once Town Meeting voted the funds, work immediately started on the temporary treatment for well number five. And you can see in this picture, this was the treatment vessel that arrived in Chatham in late April, early May. And basically, it's a large vessel which holds granular activated carbon, which can strip out the PFOS. And I'm happy to say that that well, that treatment facility, that temporary treatment facility, went online in June of this year and has been functioning well ever since. We've taken multiple samples out of, from the treated water coming out of well five and the PFOS level has been non-detect. Once the new permanent treatment facility is built, this treatment vessel will be actually moved to the new building and used part of the, as part of the permanent treatment facility. We also awarded a contract to Robert Auer Company out of Harwich for completion of wells 10 and 11. Those wells are expected to be online in the fall of 2023. So we basically have to get through this summer and next summer before we will have that additional million gallons a day. And the figure towards the bottom of the screen shows wells 10 and 11, the pump houses where my cursor is currently building. We will build a small treatment facility here because we do have to provide pH control and disinfection for this water before we will run a new water main, basically out to Mill Hill Road and join with the rest of the water system. In addition, the town has contracted with Weston and Sampson In addition, the town has contracted with Weston and Sampson for design of a permanent facility to treat wells five and eight. This effort was already kind of in the pipeline, if you will, because wells five and eight had been identified with elevated levels of iron and manganese. So a treatment facility was already being contemplated. That treatment facility will now also include treatment for PFOS. And so we will be treating wells five and eight for iron, manganese, and PFOS simultaneously. And so we will be able to bring those wells back online, probably not until 2025, at full capacity. In the meantime, we will continue to use well number eight with the temporary facility during the busier, higher-demand-summer-type seasons. Just quickly, I wanted to show what I was talking about earlier in terms of impacts to the wells. So as you pump groundwater out of the well, you basically create this cone of depression, where you've basically used up all the water, and then you have to draw new clean water into the well. Well, if that cone of depression gets too close to the the basically slotted area at the bottom of this figure, which is the bottom of the well where the holes are that draw the water into the pump, you can damage the well because you can start sucking air and other potential contaminants into it. So that is why you don't want to pump your wells for that 24-hour period. You want to give them a chance to rest and allow that cone of depression to kind of fill back in. And you can see here, you know, it takes quite a bit of time, you know, for the cones of depression to re restore themselves following prolonged pumping periods. I won't talk about this one quickly. And then on to our current situation of conservation measures. These two figures are USGS groundwater monitoring wells. The one in the upper left is in Chatham at the intersection of Route 28 and 137. The one in the lower right is a well, monitoring well in Brewster, just off Route 6A. And the important thing to note here is, if you look at 2019 and 2020, you can see that both of those wells rebounded fairly significantly during the winter period. So, you know, when we had the winter snows and the precipitation, groundwater pretty well restored itself, and then seasonally, every year, it drops down to a low level in the summer, and then comes back up again. But what happened in summer '21, or winter '21, and now winter this past winter, we didn't get that restoration of the groundwater levels in either of these two wells. So basically, we started out last summer and this summer behind the eight ball, where groundwater levels were already significantly below where they would normally be in the springtime. And that's what's caused a lot of the concern recently over our wells getting too low and resulting in the imposition of water restrictions. And then just today, the State of Massachusetts, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, raised the drought level on Cape Cod up to level two, which, as you can see from this figure, is significant drought. Most of the eastern two-thirds of the state was already at level three, which is critical drought. So unfortunately, things are not getting better. And, you know, while we may get a little bit of rain tonight, it's nowhere, not going to be anywhere near significant enough to break this drought. And that's supported by the U.S. Drought Monitor, which is a drought monitor that comes out from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, which has had most of the eastern third of Cape Cod of Massachusetts, including Cape Cod, in their level of severe drought. And that's why the Board of Selectmen, acting as Water and Sewer Commissioners, have been implementing a number of water conservation measures in our meeting again tomorrow to review those and potentially make further amendments to that. And so with that, I will finish up and turn it back over to Mr. Littrell.
Thank you very much, Bob. We appreciate that. Obviously, a great deal of important information and a challenging future. The Summer Residents Advisory Committee has been looking into the issue of a so-called residential tax exemption.
So just this. Okay. Thank you very much. As our chair pointed out to you earlier, part of the work of the Summer Residents Advisory Committee is to present the positions of the summer residents to the Select Board and other organizations, represent the summer residents. And we also try to report back to you, to the summer residents, mostly on our website, on the positions that we have taken. Tonight, we're going to change this a little, or report back to you in a little more detail on the issue of residential tax exemption, and the way we've approached our analysis of it. And we've also asked a couple of members of our group who have knowledge on data technology to try and come up with a more accurate percentage of exactly the dollar amount of the summer residents' contribution. And they have done that, and will be presenting that as well. So this is the chart that we start with. We came up with a number 65% of the tax dollars from the summer residents. Sharon Dykens suggested 67% in his remarks. We asked our people to be conservative, and I suspect his 67% is more accurate. It's still the same basic ballpark. But it's important to note the relationship of these numbers, because the summer residents pay two-thirds of the money that comes out of the residential tax and goes toward funding the expenses of the town. And we're happy to do that under a fair tax system, where the money is being used for good intent to solve all the problems of the town. The top part of the chart shows you the effect of the increased price of houses, actually the increased assessment on houses. Going over a period of 10 years, when you get to, or even just the last five years, you see that the total residential assessments, two-thirds of which are summer resident, have increased from $6 billion to $7.75 billion. Therefore, the tax rate has either stayed the same or gone down in various periods for the last 10 years. But the ability to produce more income for the town to use for its general purposes is increased by the increase in the assessments. So it's a two-edged sword. The houses are more expensive, but they provide more income for the town to make use of. Now, a residential exemption has been has been considered but rejected for a long time in Chatham by all of the people that have addressed it, in the government, all the consultants, and all of the acting bodies. And I'll get into that in a minute. But first, let me tell you briefly what it is, and I can summarize this. If a town adopts a residential exemption, it can set a percentage reduction in the assessed value of homes of qualified full-time residents. To make up for the revenue lost by reducing the assessment, the tax rate is increased on all residential property. So the effect of the residential exemption is that it adds no additional tax revenue. It just occurs additional administrative expense, only to shift liability within the As I said, the residential exemption has been considered and rejected in Chatham many times. Each year, in setting the tax rate, the Select Board determines whether or not to adopt a residential exemption. Over the last eight years, a residential exemption was opposed or voted down by the Board of Assessors, the staff, the Finance Committee, and, in all but one case, a majority of the Select Board. There was an instance where a citizen's petition proposed seeking a home rule change that they hoped would provide additional rentals. But that was examined by the, excuse me, examined by the Finance Committee and determined to be something that wouldn't work, and it was voted down at the town meeting. So all of this starts with the Board of Assessors. And there's good reason why they have all turned this down in the past. This is the Board of Assessors' statement in 2020, in which they unanimously voted against a residential exemption. They have the authority to start the process, and they make their recommendation. Their reasoning basically has been the same since then. And the two major points they make here is, first, that the residents also pay an additional personal property tax, the summer residents, that full-time residents don't pay, and that the summer residents place fewer demands on municipal services. In addition to those two factors, the residential exemption imposes additional costs on the town. It's been estimated that in taking the filed information that's required, because every taxpayer that resides in town must file certain documents and seek the residential exemption and qualify for it. And the town estimates it would take about one-half of an additional employee, or approximately $60,000, to handle that project. And you can see what it's like if you turn to the town of Truro, which has adopted a residential exemption. This is what Truro requires of every year-round resident. Signed copies of federal Massachusetts return, first two pages with social security numbers and income redacted for confidentiality. Massachusetts Drive is licensed, showing a street address in town. Registration of one vehicle garaged in town. Proof of motor vehicle excise tax paid in town. Copy of a fiscal year real estate tax. And they have a special provision for a town clerk census. Also, there are two other forms of ownership that are addressed. If it's owned by an LLC or any kind of corporate form, it can't get a residential exemption, even if you live there. And if it's owned by a trust, and there are a lot of people, particularly older people, that have put homes in trusts for children or grandchildren, you must be, you as the owner, must be a beneficial owner of the trust, or you don't get the residential exemption. And the vice here is that if you don't get the residential exemption, you get a tax increase, just like the summer residents, because the tax goes up for everybody. And if you think you're going to get a residential exemption, and the analysis puts you on the wrong side of the line, it's hard to think that anybody's going to change their back for you. You're going to wind up paying more taxes, even though you're a year-round resident. So it has a lot of vices. And there are even more ways that it hurts full-time residents. I've told you about trusts or LLCs. There's also a fact that the residential exemption gives you a benefit if you're a full-time resident, and the increased tax cuts into that benefit. And these things progress, and at some point, they intersect, and that's the break-even point. If you're on the wrong end of the break-even point, if you own a house that has appreciated a lot in value, your tax is going up. And even if you're below the break-even point, if you, as you're getting close to it, I think the value of the exemption is going to wind up being less for you. And finally, you can only get a residential exemption for one dwelling, which is your home that you live in full-time, and file all the necessary information about. If you own a rental property, if you just own another property, your tax on that is going to go up, and perhaps offset or overwhelm the the help that you get from the exemption. So it's not without, it's not as if the full-time residents all get a benefit. They don't all get a benefit. And it's a little slipshod in the way it applies to people. It never considers need. That's irrelevant to this equation. If you're a wealthy person, it's just your address that gets If you're a wealthy person, it's just your address that gets it. So we basically, as the summer residents, as the summer residence committee, we try to behave as responsible citizens and support the goals of the town, and we're in agreement with all of the goals that Chairman Dykens listed, and there are things like helping families, helping the elementary school. Many of these things, we don't get any benefit out of. For example, the school system. But we're happy to see our tax funds spent on that because that is what the town needs, and we consider ourselves good neighbors to all of the full-time residents, and we should have common goals for the town. A good school system, a local elementary school, affordable, attainable housing, they're all necessary in Chatham, and they're for the good of the entire community, and we have long supported them and gone to the board, gone to the Finance Committee with proposals, ideas, our support. We have one member of our committee who's a planner and builder in California, who at his own expense has hired an architect and done renderings and plans for what an attractive, affordable community could look like, and presented that to the town and encouraged the issuance of RFP for the construction of something along these lines. You have to increase density. We understand that, and we have been behind all of these things. But a residential exemption is not the solution to this problem. We support all the programs that seek to help people in Chatham that are in need. There are tax rebates for seniors, for veterans, for the disabled, and we would support the expansion of those programs because we think that's important for the community. But again, the residential exemption doesn't do that. It doesn't pay any attention to need, and some people that are needy are going to wind up getting hurt by it, and the only purpose it serves is to move money from one group of taxpayers, the summer residents, to another group of taxpayers, the full-time residents. Some of them will be deserving need the help, but some of them may have more money than many summer residents, and they will be getting this extra benefit, which, let's face it, comes right out of the pocket of the summer residents, because that third's number, I discussed at the beginning, sorry, will be higher than two-thirds under a residential It'll make the disparity even more so, and there's really no reason to increase the contribution of the people that are paying two-thirds of the total thing. Now, we believe that Chatham has the financial strength from the growing value of its community, and it's well-managed by our town management. We have a wonderful bond rating under an evenly-applied tax system. It can raise all the money that's necessary to fund all of the needs of the, of the town. Now, Chairman Dykens mentioned a few things, and I don't want to disrespect him by not I don't buy the idea that we should look at what Nantucket and Provincetown are doing and make our decision based on that or be guided by their thinking. There are over 300 towns in the state of Massachusetts. They all can adopt a residential exemption, but only 14 towns in the whole state have ever adopted it, and that's not even the majority of the towns on the Cape. I don't think we should go to Nantucket and talk to them. They're probably happy with this situation. I think Chatham is a bit of a unique community. I think of it all the time when I think about the Eldridge Garage and the kind of things that we do. We do things our own way, and a lot of us like that. So we should make our own decision, and we shouldn't just treat it as a financial decision. We should remember it's a personal decision, too, because people, there are summer residents that are making a substantial contribution, I think will, many will be offended by being treated as a second-tier taxpayer, and I don't think that's the way to solve the problems. I think the problems Chairman Dykens addressed, affordable housing, care for the age, things like that, need a surgical solution. There are lots of good ways to provide those homes. A residential exemption is not a surgical solution. It is putting a shotgun and blowing it into the system, and things fall where they may. You may be surprised where they fall, but you're better off, in our opinion, as summer residents, and all of us working together and using the money we can produce under a system that the assessors regard as more equitable to fund what we need in the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike. Jamie Meehan, the chair, is going to give us a Chatham scorecard, but I'm going to ask Chief Anderson if you would maybe kind of come down the center aisle, and if there are any questions that people have written down, if you could pass them to the chief when he comes down. Maybe there aren't any, Mike. This may be a very easy job for you, but there were, there are a couple, and if you could bring them up. Thank you. Chairman Meehan, the Chatham Scorecard, an annual event.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and we'll make this short and sweet. I've got a great story to tell, but it's real short, and I want to get you home to watch the Red Sox beat the Braves. Tie score, bottom of the fifth. For many years, we've shown financial data, mostly comparing Chatham versus other Cape towns. This data is captured and presented in the Chatham Scorecard, and what we try to do with the Scorecard is highlight the great financial show that the town runs and that our investment is in good hands, but also to highlight some issues that track fields needs to be emphasized. In the past, one of the issues was health benefits. The town is obligated to pay retirees, also known as OPEB liability, and we're pleased the town has had a funding plan in place for the last several years, and it has a well-thought-out plan to whittle down the close to $17 million of obligation over the next 15 years or so. So on this slide, what we're showing is the tax rate of Chatham at $4.62, or $1,000 of assessed value versus the Cape average of $8.09. And this is 43% less than the Cape average. The average property tax bill in Chatham is $5,164, a little bit less than the Cape average of $5,416. The average single-family assessed value of $1.1 million is 63% higher than the Cape average of $685,000. And another way to present this data is to show what percentage of the tax bill is supported by assessed property values, and for Chatham, it's .46%, which is nearly, which is nearly 44% less than the Cape average. And for specific comparisons, our Harwich neighbors pay about the same amount in taxes as we do, yet our average assessed value is more than 75% higher. So I'll let that sink in a little bit. And finally, as far as recent property sales, the median sales price in Chatham is 1.575 million, 120% greater than the Cape average of $710,000. Mr. Moderator, back to you.
Thank you, Chairman Meehan, and thanks to all of the speakers. Our town manager may have some questions online. If she does, maybe we'll start with one that I have here, and this can be for anybody who wants to answer it. When will Chatham have a dedicated bike lane on Route 28? Anyone care to try to respond to that? It, it, State Highway, the question goes on to say there's plenty of room using the decrepit sidewalks, and I'm not characterizing, I'm reading, using the decrepit sidewalks. Maybe we could think about that. Did you have any questions, Jill, online?
I don't. There's no questions online, but as a partial answer to that question, Mass. Department of Transportation is doing what they call a complete streets. So one of the criteria for any overlay or realignments is to have an active, either bicycle lane or a shared multipurpose path. We have one of those in West Chatham, and that's the roundabouts between George Ryder Road and Barn Hill Road.
Thank you. What is the debt ceiling of the town? How close to the maximum is the town currently? And Salala?
The debt ceiling, I don't, I didn't bring that with me, but it is set by statute, and it's 5% of the value of the town, and we have plenty of room to issue debt. I think it's like $261 billion, and we have issued about $102 million. So we're well under the debt ceiling.
Thank you. I think the chair suggested we alternate and go to some live questions, too?
Sure.
Or do you want to keep on with these?
No, we can, we can go with live questions if...
Anybody who hasn't written one down? We'll, we'll keep going then. Why did the town delay over 20 years any movement to create the wells with infiltration? Why wasn't water priority to a town developing at the rate that Chatham has? Anyone care to try to respond?
I can't, it's Jill Goldsmith, town manager. I can't speak back 20 years, but I know at least in the last 15, there's been active development of water treatment plants, and I see Dr. Bob is here. He can work through his 37 years of knowledge.
Yeah, the reason why Wells 10 and 11 were not pursued, as I indicated earlier, was the fact that there was MTBE detected, and the town continued to monitor that situation pretty much every year and watched the levels decline over time. And then, you know, as I indicated, there was a process already in place to start moving forward again on Wells 10 and 11, which then was accelerated dramatically with the PFAS issue and the shutdown of Wells 5 and 8. But the town's been tracking its water usage and ability to provide water for decades, and that's why the studies were done back, you know, in the mid-'90s to look at alternative sources. Unfortunately, a number of the other locations that were identified had significant issues with them, primarily resulting from the groundwater that, you know, that we're utilizing, high iron and manganese, and to deal with that, we would have to build water treatment plants, which we ultimately did for 6, 7, and 9. But that fact made it extremely expensive to bring new sources online, and at the same time, we were doing the wastewater plan, and we were looking at water conservation measures, low-flow toilets, things like that, changes to the water regulations prohibiting new sprinkler systems. So you have to put all those things into the mix to understand why things are done in the timeframes that they were done.
Thank you, Bob. Has the town considered opting in to Massachusetts law, Chapter 90, Section 76, to reduce the speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour? Number of towns in Massachusetts have done this, and would a summer resident engage the town to make this happen? Question mark. Is there any thought been given to that at this point?
I don't believe so, but certainly if, if a person wants to have the Select Board members have an agenda item, it can come through my office and we can certainly consider it.
And do we not have a traffic safety committee?
We do. So Traffic Safety Committee meets at various intervals. Certainly, a person can start with them or, or come to our office and the Select Board, and we can direct them appropriately.
The town manager's office would be the place to go so the summer resident, in answer to the question, can engage with the town manager, and that would be a start. What is the town's policy or position on groundwater irrigation systems to keep large lawns green while we experience a reduction in our groundwater? And I think, Bob, you may have, if you're still there, I know you are, you may have touched briefly on restrictions, but what restrictions are coming?
Well, I heard two questions. One was, you know, related to private wells. The town can't necessarily control private wells. We can control people who use the town water system. We encourage private well users to abide by the same restrictions whenever we put water conservation measures in place and send out press releases. The next steps that may be coming, currently, we are allowing watering Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I wouldn't be at all surprised that during the discussion tomorrow, there is a proposal put forward to potentially restrict watering to one day a week. Some of our neighboring towns have done that. The state is recommending that, especially now that the Cape has been elevated to drought level two. So I think we will see measures recommended, and then, you know, we'll see what action the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee takes, as well as the Select Board.
Thank you. Can anyone update us on the status of the former Cumberland Farms building next to the Chatham Village Market, or CVS, characterized as less than an elegantly attractive site? I think it's, I think it's owned by a summer resident, but that's, oh, it is, actually. Very nice gentleman, but I don't know what his current plans are. Anyone have any information on that? That's essentially it. It was, it was sold by the former owners within the last six or eight months, and I don't know what the status is.
Yeah, I see Katie's on. I'm not sure there's been any permitting activity. If so, she could speak to that.
Thank you. So there was a pre-application conference with the planning board with the new owner of the building. That was well, I think, well over eight or nine months ago, and so we have not heard anything specific. There was consideration for a potential restaurant with maybe an apartment or two on the second floor, but that has, that was the last we've heard, and we haven't heard anything new since.
Can I ask, appropriate for me to ask a question about that? I understood that there's a zoning provision, it may not be true, so I'd love to clarify, that prohibits food from being sold there because it's so close to the market. Is that true?
If I could, so I don't believe it's a zoning provision. I believe that there, that the issue had to do with the sale of the property by Cumberland Farms, that it's a use restriction put on any new, any new owner, that they can't sell products that would be similar to those sold by Cumberland Farms, and that's my understanding of the restriction that's on the property.
Yeah, I agree, Katie. It's not, it's a deed restriction. I don't know what it says, but it's not a zoning matter because we, we could have a restaurant requiring other issues.
Mr. Moderator, I have one.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you. My microphone was not on, but I said that I agreed with Katie that it's a deed restriction issue rather than a zoning issue. Is it realistic to ask the town to institute a noise ordinance at the airport dealing with early morning and late evening flights?
It's complicated. I'm sure I could send that over to the Airport Commission to review.
It's a question, as Jill just said, that maybe someone might consult with, through Jill's... Jill's office or through the select board, the Airport Commission, which might be able to answer it more directly. How much is in the budget was funded toward OPEB, other post, other post-employment benefits? What percentage is funded versus projections?
Every year, the town appropriates $150,000 as a standalone article. As was mentioned, we do have a dedicated funding source, 1.5% surcharge or surtax on the tax bill, which raises about $560,000, at least it did in FY 2022, and that probably will increase as we go along. So, you know, 560,000, 150,000, plus we fund, we fund a pay-as-you-go through the retirement budget, and that's about $690,000 on an annual basis.
Thank you. Jill? Go ahead.
Okay. I have a remote question for SREC. So will the town continue to allow summer residents to use remote participation for Chatham meetings even if COVID went away? And the restriction is regarding the open media law, and that is the in-person quorum waiver that allows us to have fully remote meetings or to have a quorum not reside within the in-person meeting. So I know that the select board has valued the remote participation, and at this time I see them continuing with it. It isn't required by the open meeting law, but certainly it's provided for some very great public participation.
Thank you, Jill. One more question. I think we were due to end about 10 minutes ago, so I won't keep you any longer than you want to be here. But how many new subsidized or housing units will be created by the development of the three new projects that Katie mentioned? There's a suggestion that we need to have a very significant number to meet the 10% for 40B purposes. Katie, is that a question that's going to be considered by the Barrett Planning Group and town staff?
Yes, that's exactly right. So we will work with, with our community engagement consultant, but our intent is that we want to maximize the use of those properties. And so we will be seeking to do what we call, what I had mentioned, the 40B local initiative project application to, to be able to maximize the use. We don't have a specified number of units for those sites as of right now. It will be determined by the type of units and by the topography of the land and, you know, a few different factors that we'll go through during the community engagement process.
Thank you. There are probably some questions here that I have not gotten to, although I think I've gotten to at least one question from every questioner. Mr. Chairman, would you suggest this might be an appropriate time to adjourn? You will continue to have your open meetings through the summer where anyone can attend, I assume?
Correct. We'll, we'll meet this, this Friday at 9 o'clock in the small annex room, and then the, most likely, the following Friday will be our last meeting. But all, all are welcome to attend the meeting, and if you have questions that don't get answered at this meeting, feel free to join us at one of our Friday weekly morning meetings.
And would it be correct to say, and I'll defer to Jill to a degree on this, that while the chair has some discretion in terms of addressing unexpected questions, that if anybody were to contact you and ask to have something put on the agenda, you might be willing to do so?
Very much so. We certainly have to abide by open meeting law, but certainly we could, we could entertain questions and do our best to, to answer those questions.
Thank you. With that, I want to thank you all for coming. You have been, as is true of this committee, concerned, and that's demonstrated by your being here, concerned about a community in which you have a strong stake. And we appreciate your interest, and we appreciate your being here. We thank all the town officials here, the select board, the police chief, fire chief, and others who are here. We thank you all very much.